Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes ma'am. Seven oh one, all of the board of selectmen to order. First item business. Alan, would you like to start us?
The United States of America. Into the republic, which is standing one nation under God. In this world, it's ever the eight and.
Members of board of selectmen are here, are here present. Next item of business is the approval of meeting minutes. I'm going to ask that we take up agenda items four, A, B, and C. And hold B because in the packet that was online, there were a couple of attachments missing. And I want to make sure the attachments are all included when we accept those, so I want to hold those. We take up agenda item four eight, please.
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen special meeting budget workshop minutes from February sixteenth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. The February sixteen, twenty twenty three regular meeting, is there a motion?
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes from February sixteenth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion or corrections? Yes ma'am.
On page six. On the appointment, when the one for Valerie Lamano, Sarah had asked. If party affiliation made a difference, and you indicated that it didn't. But when we put on their first question about it, we replied negatively. I don't like your choice of the word negative, because it sounds like you were rewording, that's far from the truth. So if we could just.
I replied in the negative, but I don't read the wording.
Right, so if that could be changed, pegged to, he replied in the negative. I'd appreciate it.
Any other corrections?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are adopted as amended. Foreseen.
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen special meeting, Rod Brook Fire Public Hearing Meeting Minutes from February sixteenth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So adopted. I have a motion to postpone adoption of agenda item four B until our March twenty third special meeting.
Move to postpone agenda item four D, February sixteenth, twenty twenty three Board of Selectmen Public Hearing. CBS minutes until our next meeting.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is postponed until our next meeting. Public participation, this is one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the Board of Selectmen. I'm going to first, as always, turn to folks who are here in the room, ask you to state your name, your business. And then I will turn to anybody who is with us online and extend the same opportunity to them. We'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting to do the same. Is there anyone? Yes sir, please state your name and address.
Paul Anderson, eighty nine Main Street, Broadbrook, I'm just looking for a clarification. Agenda item nine C is Veterans Ordinance, Veterans Exemption Ordinance. Is intended to replace eighteen dash oh four, the existing ordinance?
No.
This is in addition to.
Correct.
Thank you.
Is there any other business, anyone else in the room who would like to address the members of the board? Sorry, move, I almost. Is there, is there anyone online who would like to address the members of the Board of Selectmen? If so, please unmute yourself, state your name and address, and state your business. Okay, there will be another opportunity later in the meeting. So, under communication, I'm not sure if communication is really the appropriate place for this, but I wanted to make sure that we, we address this. We have a woman in the room who is the recipient of an award from an International Nurses Association called the Daisy Foundation. The Daisy Foundation is a nonprofit organization that honors nurses internationally for the dedicated care that they provide to their patients. The Daisy Award for Extraordinary Nurses is a way to say thank you to nurses and to honor the superhuman work nurses do for patients and families every day. This is, this is an internationally recognized and prestigious award, and East Windsor's own Andrea Petro, RN, is one of this year's winners. Andrea is a prenatal labor and delivery nurse in the Bay State area hospitals. And I, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, Town of East Windsor, I want to present her with this proclamation. Whereas the more than three point one million professional nurses in the United States comprise our nation's largest healthcare profession. Whereas the depth and breadth of the nursing profession meets the diverse and emerging healthcare needs of an American population in a wide range of settings. And whereas professional nursing has been demonstrated to be an indispensable component in the safety and quality of care delivery. And whereas the ongoing efforts of our nurses should be recognized. Whereas the Daisy Foundation was created to express gratitude by a generous family that experienced extraordinary nursing in their own right. And is the international leader in a meaningful recognition of nurses. Whereas the Daisy Award honors outstanding nurses internationally who provide care for patients and their families every day, wherever they practice. In whatever role they serve and throughout their careers. Now therefore be hereby known to all, Town of East Windsor offers its sincere congratulations. The East Windsor resident Andrea Petro, RN, for receiving this prestigious award, the Daisy Award, dated this ninth day of March twenty twenty three. Congratulations. You didn't know this was happening. We're going to get a picture. Go and have your family. You guys want to come up and take a picture of one? Yeah, you're included here too.
Nurse candidates, I hope.
I have a couple more.
If you're not feeling well.
What's that?
That we're all wondering if you're not feeling well.
Oh, no, I'm sure, I'm fine, I've been taking prophylactics. So. Not will see this. I was, somebody said to me. Because I'm going to be doing a lot of talking tonight, because I'm not feeling terribly well, I'm wondering if somebody else might be interested in reading the proclamation commemorating Women's History Month, thinking maybe one of the ladies to my side.
Sure. Town of East Windsor proclamation, now therefore Women's History Month celebrates the countless women who have fought tirelessly and courageously for equality, justice, and opportunity in our nation. Whereas the Town of East Windsor affirms our commitment to advancing rights and opportunities for women and girls. And building on the legacy of both recognized trailblazers and unsung heroines. Who have guided the course of American history and continue to shape its future. Whereas women have opened the doors of opportunity for subsequent generations of dreamers and doers. As community leaders, educators, doctors, scientists, childcare providers, and more. Women power our economy and lead our nation. As first responders and service members, they stand, watch over our lives and liberties. As innovators, entrepreneurs, and essential workers in every industry, they represent the very best of America. Whereas women, often women of color, have been on the front lines fighting for and securing equal rights and opportunity throughout our country's history. As abolitionists, civil rights leaders, suffragists, and labor activists. Women continue to lead as advocates for reproductive rights, champions of racial injustice, and LGBTQ equality. Whereas despite significant progress, women and girls continue to face systematic barriers to full and equal participation in our, in our economy and society. Disparities persist in economic security, healthcare, and caregiving responsibilities, especially for women and girls of color. Those who perform critical work, including those who care for our children and our families, are too often overlooked, underpaid, and undervalued. Now therefore, in recognition of all women past and present in our community. I, Jason E. Vazza, first selectman of the Town of East Windsor, Connecticut, do hereby proclaim March twenty twenty three to be Women's History Month.
Thank you very much. That would have been a lot to read, and I'm not going to read everything that's in here, there's a lot of stuff that people can read on their own, but just as an update to the board pertaining to communications. As you know, we elected to defer implementation and property revaluation, it was supposed to happen for the October one, twenty twenty two grant list. There is a process that has to go, be gone through in order to accomplish that and to secure waiver of penalties from OPM. According to the general statutes, twelve dash sixty two, C and D. We need to wait for thirty days after the signing of the grant list by the assessor to submit the waiver request to Secretary Beckham. That was on or about March third, so on March sixth, I sent out this request that's included in the packet and explains. The reasons, I understand there to be justification for a hardship and an exemption. So we'll wait now to hear from the secretary on that. As is the case, I typically include testimony that I submit on my own behalf or on behalf of the town. In our packet, there are a number of bills over the last couple of weeks that I have done that on. They're all pertaining to some iteration of the citing of solar projects, those are in your packet. There is a letter, speaking on the solar topic, a letter to Melanie Bachman, the executive director of the Connecticut Citing Council. Praying for relief or some compliance with some noise intrusion that the folks in the Jesse Lane neighborhood are incurring because of the East Windsor Solar One project. On the legislative testimony and a letter to the secretary, I'm sorry, to the executive director. I've been working with not just our legislators, but as you can see from the CC, on the letter to Secretary Bachman, but also. The chairs of Planning and Development Committee, which has cognizance in the General Assembly. And Representative Foster has been working directly with the lobbyists that represent the solar companies to get some relief on that. So. Works in progress. We have some, we have a resignation, Alaric Rodriguez has signified his intention to resign his position as a member of the Building Commission. That's in the packet and requires action.
Make a motion that we accept the recognition of Alzar Rodriguez effective February twenty seven, twenty twenty three on the Building Commission.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? I would just say that Alan has served on that committee for a very long time and overseen some, some pretty impactful projects. We're sorry to see him go, especially when a couple others hopefully on the horizon. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very unanimous. Okay, and speaking of those projects that are on the horizon, as you all are aware. The town has been the recipient of a grant from the federal government in an amount not to exceed two point seven five million dollars for the renovation and expansion of the Scout Hall facility and conversion into. A multi-service center, multi-service municipal service center at the Scout Hall facility called the Community Center. We had a public hearing two weeks ago, or we were all, three weeks ago, or we were all present. And the call of the, the hearing was to talk about the preferred funding options from the community. I didn't hear much feedback in terms of what funding source people would prefer us to use. I did work with the finance director and identified what she and I believe to be the most appropriate course of funding. For that project, which is to use the money that's already in the C and R account, the two point seven five million from the federal government, and nine hundred and twenty four thousand from the town's ARPA allocation. That is not set in stone per se, if you guys want to talk about other options, you can certainly do that. But that's, you know, the recommendation from AMI NICE for how to fund the balance of the project. There are resolutions in here, one forwarding the resolution onto the Board of Finance and then to town meeting, and the other. On page three and four of that attachment to remove the question from a vote at town meeting and place it on a ballot for reference. So with that, I'll turn it over, I'll, I'll open the floor in questions or comments, suggestions, alternative ideas.
I believe you and I had a conversation, Ray originally wanted to take all the money out of ARPA, and we decided that half would be better. So. I don't have a problem with that. But is that an option that the Board of Finance might vote that? Or refusing?
So the process, if the Board of Finance were to change the funding source, as I understand it, they would have to refer the matter back to us for consideration. And forwarding to a town, ultimately, the only board that can trigger a town meeting is the Board of Select. Because of the financial implications, this is required to go through the Board of Finance and then to the town's legislative body, one means or the other. Because the amount that we're seeking to appropriate is nine hundred and twenty four thousand dollars. It could be done just through a town meeting, but a referendum is a more inclusive and transparent way of doing it. So I would, even though we don't have to do it, I would rather do it through. So the long answer to your short question is the Board of Finance can't change it and we would have to take that. Which may happen.
Never know, that's why I was asking.
Any other feedback, considerations?
I think this is the best option at this point.
Would you like to read the resolution?
I can. The entire thing, Ray?
Pages one and two, please, and then the pages three and four of the second piece of this, which has been removing it from the call of how to get it set in a referendum.
Okay. Town of East Windsor Board of Selectmen Resolution, resolution appropriating. Four billion. No, it's not, there's a typo there.
For the record, it should be four million, seven hundred and twenty thousand.
Not as well. Four million, seventy two thousand for costs associated.
Four million, seven hundred and twenty.
Seven hundred and twenty. For costs associated with an addition and renovation to the Scout Hall Youth Center, Community Center project. And authorizing the use of federal and state grant monies to finance the portion of the appropriation not funded from monies in the town's capital and non-reoccurring fund. Whereas there exists one million, two hundred thousand in the town's capital and non-reoccurring fund. That is set aside for the costs associated with additions and renovations to the Scout Hall Youth Center, Community Center project. And whereas the cost of the project is estimated to cost approximately. Four million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, and whereas on December twenty third, twenty twenty two, the Town of East Windsor. Received a grant commitment from the United States government in the Federal Consolidated Appropriations Act, twenty twenty three, HR twenty six seventeen. For the costs associated with the project. And whereas such federal grant commitment is an amount equal to fifty five percent of the project costs. Up to a maximum amount of two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. The federal grant can only be accessed if the town can secure the remaining funds for the project. And whereas in light of the recent federal grant and the available funds in the town's capital and non-reoccurring fund for the project. The Board of Selectmen desired to approve the project and authorize for spending a total of four million, seven hundred and twenty thousand for the project. And whereas in addition to the one million, two hundred thousand available in the town's capital and non-reoccurring fund for the project. The Board of Selectmen desire that the federal grant be used to pay project costs. And whereas the Board of Selectmen desire that the remainder of the project costs not paid for by the available funds in the town's capital and non-reoccurring fund. Or the federal grant be paid for by the town's Federal American Rescue Plan Act grant monies. Or so, or so much thereof as may be necessary after deducting other grants or other sources of funds available to the town for the project. Including but not limited to the receipt of State of Connecticut Community Investment Fund grant monies. And whereas the town charter provides that the four million, seven hundred and twenty thousand appropriation for the project requires the approval of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the town meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen, the Town of East Windsor hereby approves and recommends to the Board of Finance. That four million, seven hundred and twenty thousand be appropriated. The. For the cost of an addition and renovations to the Scout Hall Youth Center, Community Center project, including but not limited to. Cost of materials, construction, renovation, site improvements, and restoration permitting and inspection, and the purchase and installation of equipment and furnishings. And all alterations, repairs, and improvements in connection therewith, as well as engineering, architectural, and all related costs. Collectively. And to meet said appropriation in addition to the one million, two hundred thousand available in the town's capital and non-reoccurring fund. The federal grant and a maximum amount of two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, and up to nine hundred and twenty four thousand of the town's Federal American Rescue Plan Act grant monies. Or so much thereof as may be necessary after deducting other grants or other sources of funds available to the town for the project. Including but not limited to receipt of State of Connecticut Community Investment Fund grant monies. Be authorized to finance the remainder of the appropriation and. The first selectman is authorized to apply for state and federal grants related to the project. And is authorized to execute all agreements, contracts, certificates, and other documents necessary for the completion and funding of the project.
Thank you, sir, do you move that?
I move the foregoing resolution before we.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded, any discussion? So the project costs of four point seven two million dollars, we have up to two point seven five million from the federal government, fifty five percent of the project costs. There is one point two million in C and R, the balance, which is expected to be nine hundred and twenty four thousand, would come from the town's ARPA allocation. Which makes this a significantly funded, a product significantly funded by the federal government. Any, anybody else have anything on this?
It won't affect the tax base.
Project costs will not affect the budget. Seeing no further debate? There is no further debates? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? With the correction. Okay, we have a second resolution, which is moving the question from the town meeting and setting a referendum. Al?
Sure.
Resolution scheduling a special town meeting and referendum vote for the Scout Hall Youth Center, Community Center project. Whereas at its meeting on March nine, two thousand twenty three, the Board of Selectmen approved and recommended the Board of Finance a resolution appropriating four million, seven hundred and twenty thousand. For the costs associated with an addition and renovations to the Scout Hall Youth Center, Community Center project. And authorizing the use of federal and state grant monies to finance the portion of the appropriation not funded from the monies in the town's capital and non-reoccurring fund. The resolution. And whereas the town charter provides that the four million, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollar appropriation for the Scout Hall Youth Center, Community Center project requires the approval of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the town meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that should the Board of Finance approve the resolution at its March fifteen, twenty twenty three meeting, a special town meeting is hereby called. To be held on March twenty second, twenty twenty three, at seven thirty PM, and at Town Hall, eleven Ry Street, Broadbrook, Connecticut, for the, the town meeting. To discuss but not vote on the resolution and pursuant to section seven dash seven of the Connecticut general statutes and the town charter. The Board of Selectmen hereby removes the resolution from the call of the town meeting for submission to the voters entitled to vote at referendum to be held on April four, twenty twenty three, during the hours from six o'clock AM. And eight o'clock PM, such referendum vote to be held at the town's two polling places under the following headings and ballot label. Shall the Town of East Windsor authorize an appropriation of four million, seven hundred and twenty thousand for the cost of the Scout Hall Youth Center, Community Center project? To be paid for in part by a federal grant in the maximum amount of seven, two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, and up to. Nine hundred and twenty four thousand of the town's Federal American Rescue Plan Act grant monies. After deducting other grants or other sources of funds available to the town for the project, yes or no? Those desiring to vote for the question shall fill in the box in the front of the question on the ballot at yes. Those desiring to vote, vote against the question shall fill in the box in the front of the ballot, in the front of the question on the ballot at no. Absentee ballots will be made available in accordance with law. The moderator of the town meeting shall adjourn such meeting after reasonable discussion of such item and conclusion of such other business as may properly become, come before the town meeting. And order such vote by voting machine in accordance with this resolution, section seven dash seven of the Connecticut general statutes and town charter. The first selectman is hereby authorized in a directive to call the town meeting in accordance with the provisions of this resolution and the Connecticut general statutes. The warning, i.e. notice, shall also state that the full text of the aforementioned resolution and question are on file, open to public inspection, and in the office of the town clerk. That the vote on the aforementioned resolution is taken under the authority of seven dash seven and chapters ninety and one fifty two of the Connecticut general statutes. And that the absentee ballots will be made available in accordance with law. The Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes at the discretion of the first selectman, the preparation and printing of explanatory text by the town clerk in accordance with section nine dash three, six, nine B. Of the Connecticut general statutes for the question to be voted upon. April four, twenty twenty three, approved above. The Board of Selectmen, at the discretion of the first selectman, further authorizes the preparation and printing of materials concerning the question to be voted on on April four, twenty twenty three, approved above. In addition to the explanatory, explanatory text in accordance with section nine dash three, six, nine B of the Connecticut general statutes. Therefore going to my resolution.
Second.
Thank you, sir, motion has been made in seconded, any discussion on the resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, under the Board of Finance, under fifty. Where are we now? Watch it.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me get my widget going, yeah. Let me get my widget going, yeah? All right. So as we left off at our last workshop, anything highlighted in green on a departmental level has already been voted to accept. If we want to open anything there, we need to vote to, or to reconsider, and then we can go back into any of those individual lines. Anybody has anything that fits? That, that circumstance where we want to talk about already closed items, we can do that. Anything that's in yellow is unresolved. Oh, I can fix that some people listen to that a little better. There are not very many that are open, and I did incorporate the Board of Education's number yesterday, which is shown in a light.
Good things. I mean, property insurance is that person.
Yeah, I thought I saw a flash of yellow.
Four one five seven.
Register our voters.
Um, did you hear back?
I did not.
I did. I, I did not forward that to you. Hold on, I have something, though. Um, actually. About what just jumped up? So your light bulb was frozen, just freezing. Amy, can I, if I email you this to you, could you run up a couple of copies quickly? There's, there's two emails and they're attached.
Okay.
Thank you. So in the meantime, while, while we're bringing, um, do we want to table that and move on to the veterans' tax credit? Everyone is waiting it out.
Well, I guess we, would you want to move to? Drop the insurance or not? We need your, for that.
Oh, well, I mean, we can stay in, we can stay in the budget. That's fine. There's stuff we can talk about. You know, I'm not sure, yeah, because she's got the changes. We have updated numbers on workers' compensation.
We didn't do C I P either.
Yeah, we can do that while she's, while she is away. So the C I P request, as you see, was one point nine million dollars. Um, I reduced that to a four percent increase over the current year or thirty-eight thousand dollars more. Um, than the nine hundred and fifty thousand that they currently have goes to nine eighty-eight. One of the things that we could do, and I'll repeat this when Amy comes back into the room, because I, I have not talked to her about this, but I want her opinion on it. We're going to end up running a surplus to debt service again, and that's because we have unassigned debt attached to that. We could move some of that debt into C I Ps. Until the budget here where we know we're, we're bonding a large ticket item. And that would allow us to take care of more of the items on the C I P list. While still preserving the funding for debt service when, when it comes time to issue bonds. So we could move a couple hundred thousand dollars out of there. Um, transfer from debt service to C I P. And allow us to tackle more of those projects without increasing the budget and, and preserving the out years, the opportunity for us to capture some bond. That took me less time than I expected before she came back, so.
The sign was, you know, say something about it.
It's just an idea, you know, I mean, um, it's, it is, we need to preserve the debt. Capacity so that we can do some of those larger scale things, um, you know, so that we can replace the radio system when we need to, which is soon. So that we can replace the, the roof on the high school. Um, but the, it doesn't make sense for us to be simply lapsing that money back into the general fund. We can be using it for other purposes on a year-to-year basis.
Great. The only, only concern is, you know, we ought to make it clear that that's there temporarily until it's time to take on one of these projects.
Well, that's committing a future board and a future budget to some of them, that's not.
That's true.
So it's really, all we can do is provide the roadmap and hope that, you know.
Remember that whole.
Then why do it at all? It's just going to sit there.
I think two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Is significant. I think you can get something done.
If you can go with that for a month, you can put it, if you transfer it into that.
So the, the, we don't, as you can see, we have almost two million dollars worth of capital requests. We fund less than half of that.
Right.
Um, this is an opportunity not for us to, to close the gap the whole way, but to make some progress towards thinning out that list. So, you know, I mean, we could do. The, that project is going to be the second and third one not funded under, under the proposal. As if we could, we could reach down and actually capture something else. It's just an idea. You know.
In favor, but we have to wait till, you know, Amy tells us that's not good.
I don't think so. You know, she, she and I are already working on the, end of the year forecast. I think that's a safe thing to do. Hey, so should have talked to you about this before. What were your thought be on taking two hundred thousand dollars out of debt service and moving it to C I Ps? Um, with the notion that we can address some of the things on the C I P list and then recover that money in the out years when we know we need to bond.
Um, I think that's okay. Thank you. Because it's a one-time thing. It's not like you're filling it with bodies, but then have to be clean mixture. I think that would be fine.
You know, property insurance can't change, right?
Yeah. I didn't know the number.
Uh, workers' comp, another family.
Hold on, let's, we're gonna, we'll go back into order, just so that we're. Not missing anything. All right, so let's take up the registrar's item first. Look, if you guys admit it to, to leave that. I'm sorry I didn't send it earlier. So I'm going to just show their changes up here, so everybody can see what we're looking at. We're going to do it in the same order.
I just left that, that he checked.
I'm sorry.
Jason, did you go off the twenty-four numbers or the twenty-three numbers when you put it in?
I brought it on. Thank you. I thought that was twenty-two point three.
Yeah, looks like the wrong ones.
And the total should be one oh seven, two thirty-nine.
Yeah.
So I got twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars more than originally.
Yeah.
Probably. Looks like it. Mostly some in theirs, but some in the election office workers too.
Right.
That's.
Yes.
Yep.
And have more than we will get that.
Right.
This still doesn't deal with. The need for new machines or any of that, right?
No. No, this is mostly on salaries.
Yeah.
I don't know if I can agree with their last. Sentence. For hiring a regular employee, you cannot.
Well, that's why I asked you to be tempted before reading of it.
Yeah. It's going to have to be a true part-time employee.
Which then becomes another issue.
Well, yeah, they also just changed. We have to provide more information now. On that, to, um.
There's a debate about that. Whether the election workers have to be employees or not. That was what I think. There's still debate. Because. Just because you work at this one, you can say, no, thanks. I'm not going to be here in May. Or I'm not going to be here in November or summertime. So are they really an employee? They get to pick where they really want to work, when they want to work.
That's a pretty good way.
So.
Are they going to make it statewide or any of those statewide?
And not.
Well, wouldn't it per diem be ten ninety-nine?
Yeah. And they are right now. But there's stuff out there wanting to make them full employees. Paying by the Medicare, them paying by the Medicare.
Who's doing?
Um, there's stuff out there in the, um, government things.
Yeah, so there's talk about them having to, you know, be run through our payroll system and, and have to pay taxes on the stipend. She probably should do, but. So this is the, you know, on the screen, you have the Departmenthead recommendation, my recommendation, and their amended recommendation. Um, and those are about right here.
But they still have an. Which salary. I would appreciate your thoughts on this matter for you to make it funny and talk to the Amy in the final on the budget.
Yeah, so that's Karen saying that he's going from thirty-two to forty-two. For adding twice as much work where she wants to go from thirty-two to sixty-four. So even the amount that Angelo is putting forward, Karen doesn't agree with. She's looking to double. That line, and he's only going from thirty-two to forty-two.
Yes, she, she wants to go to, uh, right.
Is that where the funding there increased then?
Well, the one line is just them. The second line below that is also going up significantly. I think from twenty-four thousand to forty-five thousand. So they're basically doubling their election workers also.
Well, that I, that I, that's the error that I brought their attention, because you have the extra, um, staffing required on this side and that side because of the change in our district. Districting, um, I can see that.
Yeah. So that's a seventy, you know, from theirs.
Right, but their salary line. They moved it up from thirty-two to forty-two. That's giving them, I'm assuming, giving each one of them five thousand dollars more a year.
Right, and Karen's wish is that.
It, it, that it goes up so they get ten thousand dollars more a year.
No.
No.
She wants sixteen thousand dollars more a year. So right now they each get sixteen. And she's looking, if you're going from four-hour days to eight-hour days, she's saying that I shouldn't be getting only a part of it. I should be getting the whole thing. So I want the other, I want sixteen doubled. So it means each of them would be paid thirty-two thousand dollars. The total line would have to be sixty-four.
To work one day plus.
One day we.
One day we.
Yeah.
Well, they gave themselves on top of everything for the elections. They're giving five hundred dollars every election that we have. On top of it. Right now.
And I don't know, but.
She does. Yeah, my recommendation.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like they, we're definitely not paying for everything that's going to happen this year. But I don't know if I'm. Think it's necessary to double. So, I mean, I think I'm good with, for the most part, for the, with the election workers. I don't know what we do about it with registrars.
Well, I agree. There's not enough time once a week to do it required in there, especially with everything that's changing. And it's changing again, so who knows what the requirements are going to be now. Um, so I get that, but I just don't. Have the numbers to break it down as to what percentage of an increase they're getting and what would the difference be? Um, would it be cheaper for us to hire a part-time person to put in there rather than increasing their salaries?
I think they're doing both. I think in the, um, in Karen's stuff, she's talking about the clerical support being under the, um, five-three-one-oh-oh-one. So that is the election worker line. So they have both.
Well, that's for the person that's doing the filing for them. They have people that go in there periodically when they get behind in the filing and they pay. Um, them, uh, safety from going in there, depending on how many hours they work, um.
So that's the clerical help.
Yeah, and that, that's in, in election, in the election workers line. That's a part of the twenty-one thousand dollar increase there.
Right, which is okay. It's not part of the salary line.
Right.
If they're only going to pay up to six hundred dollars a year.
I mean, the people have to still provide us W-nines, even if they do ten ninety-nine work.
I agree.
And if it's more than six hundred, they're paying tax on it.
I agree.
So, you know, it's possible that there'll be early voting. Do you think that's the case?
I haven't heard. So C C M hasn't really, we had a conversation about that today, uh, at the Legislative Committee, and they still don't know. When it's taking effect. There, you know, some people are saying, I'm hearing this year, some people are saying, I'm hearing, you know, in the elections in twenty twenty-five. There really hasn't been clear guidance from Secretary of State.
Imagine convincing that for this year. Be a humogous lift.
That would, that would be an earthquake in the, uh, registrar's world, um, if they were to do that. I don't see it happening either, but the, the answer to your question is there has been no clear guidance from any of our sister.
I think, I, I mean, I, I would base my decision on betting against that for this year, but. Um, we need to think about it next year and something.
Well.
Oh, the percentage of salary change should be up there. Isn't it on their screen for you?
Yeah.
How much is that?
Thirty-one percent.
Thirty-one percent.
I was recommending to. I was recommending to. Forty-eight percent of heart.
No, whose responsibility isn't to grant them their increase? Can we, I mean, if we put the budget through with two, and you see that that's not. Enough going forward based upon any new hours they have, the put-in, and we then, as a board of selectmen. Give them a salary increase?
Yes.
Or where would you get the wages from?
Right, and that's by the money. But.
So if we put it, if we put it in the budget the way it was. And choose not to give them, then we can turn that money back at the end of the year, right?
True.
Do we have authority to do that?
Yes, so the, once the budget process is, is adjudicated, the, the management oversight, the, the salary line, the salary assignment falls to us. They, now they could turn around and do other things appropriate within the line with the salaries, but they can't unilaterally increase their rates. You guys typically don't see payroll changes because typically for unaffiliated bargaining, it raises two percent, and that's what it did by those good processes. If that's. Change, it occurs here. My recommendations.
This is your recommendation now, one oh seven.
No, that's Angelo's.
I'm the first selecting candidate.
Yours, the second one over here, seventy-four, five, thirty-five.
Yes.
Which is lost in the previous year of seventy-nine oh.
No, no, that's seventy-nine oh eight-five is their right. No, no, that's seventy-nine oh eight-five is their rec, their original request. The, the, in the selection line right now is their amended request, and in, in the middle, in between them is my recommendation.
And what's current your budget outside of the grant?
Uh, seventy-two, eighty-eight, ninety.
So they're just going up a couple thousand dollars. From this year.
Yeah, I got them going up two and a half percent. It's not numbered. First, third, for sure.
So at there, and I can't remember what our conversation landed on last time around with them. Their. Proposed budget doesn't cover. The amount of elections that we have this year.
Well, they changed that one.
Right, in their original proposal, no.
No.
It, it didn't count for enough, and that's what, when Marie did the math, she said, you guys don't have enough money in here for your election workers. But traditionally, I mean, we don't always have three budget referendum, but you never know when you're gonna.
Well, you, you know, you can have a Republican.
If you look at, at the history, though, if you're looking at line history.
Primary.
There should not.
You're gonna have. The budget referendums, so you have three budget referendums, and now you got the extra, uh, referendum if it gets approved for the, um, Scott Hall building.
No, no, that's this year.
Yeah, oh, that's right, that's initiative, but it, okay.
If you're looking into, into the potential electoral events in FY twenty-three, twenty-four, you gotta look at a municipal primary in September, maybe, probably not, but maybe. Municipal election in November.
Yeah.
Presidential primaries in whenever we're doing it, February, March, April. Uh, budget referendum in, um, May and June. So six, six.
And that's why he changed the forty-five thousand dollars, reflects three referendum, two primaries.
Two primaries and one, right. Which it needs to be. So you would have to change that number, Jay. Under your selection. Under electric workers, you'd have twenty-four thousand for your budget, you would have to increase that to the new number.
Well, that's what we will, and this.
Right.
For funding your guys' column.
We're operating in the FY twenty-three, twenty-four selection line, I, I reprogrammed in their amended numbers, just so we can see it on the board. Um, my, my column, column K is fixed. Um, what, what we're doing now is making any adjustments off of my recommendation, so if you guys wanna incorporate their changes, those are currently reflected in column L. Um, you can either accept them all, reject them all, or accept them on a line by line.
Well, yours. Twenty-one, nine, fifty. Needs to be added to twenty-four thousand, is that what they're saying?
It is in their column, that's why it's forty-five.
Yeah, this is the column you wanna be looking at, right here.
Maybe you could ungram.
Oh, that's our column.
This is your column.
Okay. I was looking at your column. I was trying to make your column accurate.
That, that's the column you're about.
I don't need to be difficult, but. Well, I'm the direction in the portion of thirty-one five, and they changed it to.
That's the difference.
Yeah.
That's their new recommended number.
For election workers.
That's got their part-time person plus, um.
Oh, they got the part-time person now, there, all right, I'm sorry, I missed that. All right, thanks. And we're gonna allow them to hire a part-time person?
It's up to you.
I like the way you. I mean, I'm, I'm kinda relying on your expertise on whether this is needed or not.
They need somebody, I just don't know how many hours they need somebody for.
Uh, it, it seems to me like this is all kinda last minute, and maybe not a hundred percent gamed out.
I don't even agree with you, Charlie.
Yeah.
And, and there's that. I mean, I, I guess what I would like to see is. You know, this is what we're looking at, you know, five years out, including, which is my biggest concern at all of this, is the fact that, you know, our, our voting machines are, you know, end of life. And we don't, we don't have anything on the table for that, which, I mean, it seems like we should be putting away money in, in CIP or somewhere for that.
Is that? Those are have our leftovers, right? Those are leftovers from the Help America Vote Act?
Yes.
That was two thousand and five.
Yes. I've been complaining forever.
So, I don't know, maybe we just put this on hold.
Well, we can't. We got a deadline, right?
No, I mean, the, the increases for this year. Unless you can say, we definitely need so much for, you know, election workers, I don't know that. We have enough, we don't have an agreement on, on registrar salary, so I don't know how we decide on that, just pick one. Doesn't seem to make sense, I, I think we need to see more justification, part of the justification is early voting, which is not gonna happen this year, redistricting.
Happened already.
Happened already, and I understand that it complicates the ballot, but I don't understand that it requires more of anybody's time. Right? Am I getting that right?
Well, I mean, all the work for the redistrict, it's been done, all of those spreadsheets that are required.
The hard part has been done.
That's been done. What about that under the table?
I mean, I agree with Alan that this seems kinda like it was just thrown together, and Marie did catch a big error on their part because. It wasn't budgeted for originally, I mean, I would be okay with going with their original recommendation of the thirty-five, nine, eight, five. Cause they did agree on that previously, um, I know it doesn't give much, but I would. Be in favor of that rather than taking the thirty-two, two, eight, nine, but. I mean, if they don't agree on the forty-two, two, eight, nine, I. I, I don't think that that's really justified anyway.
My thought is, put the money in there. But. I think we need to have a discretion as to where now it's spent.
Will we have that authority now?
Yeah.
Once they get rid of, it's really their own.
Um, it's on.
We can control their salary increases, but that's it.
Right.
All right.
Which we could do.
This document. The forty-five, nine, fifty, requested for registered salary, that's not.
That's not what's up here.
That's not right.
Two, two, eight, nine, right? That doesn't even.
Right, that's a budgeting work, it's a gross saving for registered salary. Yeah, so their memos, well, I'm not sure, I don't wanna speak for them, cause I didn't do it, you know, it wasn't part of it.
Um, the support, the support for the next page actually is the forty-five, nine, fifty is for their various positions on the two sides. For the spreadsheet that's.
That's pretty.
Yeah. See that forty-nine, forty-five, nine, fifty, so that is election workers, because it's moderators, checkers. Counters.
All right, so this narrative is incorrect.
Right.
Yes. That would be true.
I guess I'm still thinking that to add the thirteen, I guess it's thirteen thousand for the election workers, we don't have to spend it, we just put it there and. Not use it if it's not needed, but it needs to come up short there, I mean, unless you're telling me.
Twenty-one thousand.
I have twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Twenty-four thousand to, uh, forty-five, nine, fifty.
Oh, sorry. I, I. Either way, I think that the extra money, we can put it there, we need it, I, I'd hate to have to go back and appropriate it later. When we're, you know, coming up on. One of these voting episodes, but I don't think that we really have. Enough. Of a plan here, or any order of reason to justify the salary increases for the registrar at this point, I'm not saying they don't need them, but I, it's kind of all over the place, and we need to, they need to come to some sort of agreement. And, and I really do wanna see something about how we're going to change these machines. When. It's too late for this budget, but.
Not far off, CIP is.
It should be, right, then that, so that work should be done, and it should be the line in CIP right up at the top.
Now, have we heard anything else about their, uh, the man, management system that they're using now? I was told you got a crash by the new Secretary of State, he doesn't wanna use that anymore.
I know nothing about it.
All right.
I don't know, guys, selfishly, I'd let this, I, I made a recommendation on this, so if we're gonna do something else, I got, you guys gotta. Move it along.
So with your recommendation, you wanna keep it without the additional twenty-one, nine, five, zero? That's what you're saying?
I mean, I can be convinced that that could go up a little bit, I'm, I'm not sure that I need to go a whole way, I'm also, I have a, a budget target of a zero mill increase.
Right.
Workers.
Yeah, I understand.
Amy, it's about, about thirty thousand dollars we can take out of another one, it's just all gone right back, so it's, we're going in the wrong direction.
I hear you.
That, and I hear that, but. You know, it's not really.
We need to be.
It's not, it's not real, if, if we know that it's a possibility, we're gonna have to appropriate money later on, so.
So, so what number is here to give you confidence that that won't be the case?
No. But I do think that, you, you know, we. It, it seems kinda obvious, we need some amount more in the election worker, at least to put it there for safekeeping. And, and I'm fine with putting the, that whole amount, but if it's gonna bust the bite in somewhere else, and then suggest less, but I think we need to do more than the twenty-four. And that's why I was looking at you, cause you kinda know this.
That twenty-four, by my calculation, should have been thirty-one, five.
So what's going on?
And then I said, with the extra, um. Thing, thirty-six, seven, fifty. Should be what that never should be.
With the extra position, you mean?
No, just on the election workers.
Okay.
My math came up with thirty-six, seven, fifty, I think somebody validated that, right?
Right.
You did.
Okay.
Um. So I would, that you definitely need to put, put in there. Okay.
Okay.
So that puts it at eighty-seven, two, five. If we move their salary back to thirty-two, nine, thirty-five.
No, that's giving them the thirty-five, that was Sarah's recommendation, was giving them a little more than that.
And we haven't, we haven't quoted that, I'm just taking the last, basically, last offer of the.
Oh, yeah, I was back to no increase in the registrar, and only increasing, and, and I like the number, the thirty-six.
Six, seven, ten.
Seven fifty. Um, for the election, that's where I'm at. Agree.
Okay.
Charlie's though.
Uh, half of it's not even their fault, because the state has no idea what they even wanna do, or what's. Exactly, so how are they supposed to plan anything, they can't.
Well, we can't.
I know, and that's why we need to just put some money in there, so that we're safe when, if, and when the state decides what the hell they're gonna do.
I'm, I'm willing to bet, though, that they're, they're not gonna get their act together to do that this year, they're gonna, if, even if they pass the bill, it's gonna be implementation, anybody without a rating up there is gonna. Know that they can't get that done for this, who's that? There's gotta be someone.
My, my guess is twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah. So I don't think we have to worry about putting money in for this.
And if we're, and if we're gonna up, upgrade the register of voters. The right way, and I think we have to do some comparisons of other towns, how many hours they're working, what are they paying, and make it accurate.
And do you need hard times that, you know, you know. It seems like that's what they do, right, they're, they're, that paperwork, so maybe they don't need. A secretary. But maybe they're not getting the hours that they.
So any, any calls that somebody needs an answer to, they can call the town clerk's office, most of the time, we get the answer from the town clerk, you know, they, they know what's going on, but.
All right, well, I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, set the, to modify the registrar voter's line to eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, if I have my math correct.
Now you've got Jason to praise.
I got eighty-eight, seven, eighty-five.
Oh, he didn't, he didn't, he used your number for the salary for registrar, I was leaving him at your two percent. What do you have in there for a number?
Yeah, thirty-two, uh, no, I don't, I have thirty-two, nine, thirty-five, yeah, I have thirty-two, nine, thirty-five, thirty-six, seven, fifty. I, okay, I have eight, eighty-five hundred for election, uh, for printing. I took that away, I forgot. All right, so, uh, send that motion, and I make a motion to put the registrar of voters at eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Second.
Any further discussion?
It's gone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Voter. Uh, and hey, for the record, that sets the registrar voter's line at thirty-two thousand, nine, thirty-five. Sexy, it sets the election workers line at thirty-six thousand, seven, fifty.
What was the total?
The total for the department is eighty-eight thousand, seven, eighty-five.
Thank you.
There's no change coming for, uh, lap. That budget is ready to be accepted.
Yeah, and I need the sixty-five hundred, cause last year we paid women seven thousand dollars more for our insider policy.
At least it's status quo.
So, Jason, do I need to clarify? Uh, you two figures for the, uh, registrars and the, um, election workers within that motion, or just to use it as a department?
It, it just used the department line, I would prefer clarity indicating where the changes had come from, but the, the motion was on the departmental by the.
Okay, thank you.
So no change from that one ninety-one?
That was.
Sorry.
We'll move to approve property insurance at one hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Amy, we had talked about restoring the five thousand dollar cut out of electricity, right?
Gas and diesel?
Gas and diesel.
Inbound properties. Their last line.
Look at that. You can take it out of gas and diesel.
Oh, it's a less, less of an increase, and ten thousand, not five thousand. Right, okay. So I'd like to, um. I'd ask for a motion to reconsider the town properties line to amend the oil and heat line.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? I'd like to, to set this budget at forty-five thousand instead of forty thousand. I got a little, this is very happy. I have a motion.
Make a motion to change the oil and heat, oil and heat, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, line from forty thousand to forty-five thousand in the town properties budget.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? Thinking of you, Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
And then on the total departmental budget?
Make a motion to accept town properties at one million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-two.
Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I opposed or I?
No, I. I'm sorry.
You're just lying.
Is that your role?
I thought I thought it was on.
Um, just FYI, the Board of Education last night voted on their budget request, which is a a three point nine eight percent increase. So I included that in this and I highlighted it in blue, just so that when we're looking at the numbers, we can get a a true reflection of where things are right now.
What's their new number?
Uh, their new number is twenty six, seven forty eight, eight fifty five. Three point nine eight percent.
What is the percentage?
Three point nine eight. So Amy, if we wanted to do that um. Uh, change from debt service to capital. You want to do that out of principle?
Yeah. I don't think we have enough in it.
Yeah. You think we need to add something to the interest line?
No.
Oh.
But I don't think we have enough to cover a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Right. So again, as as we talked about, my my suggestion would be to take this eight sixteen number and turn it into a six sixteen number and add that two hundred thousand dollars to the overall C I P allocation.
I love that idea.
So we already approved that service, so we need to do the same thing. We need to do a motion to reconsider um. Open it up, make the change and adopt the the change now.
Um, can I do both at once?
It's two different departments.
No, I mean, in that change the line and then then.
For just for clarity in the minutes, let's do.
So make motion that we change the principal amount in debt service.
We need to reconsider it first.
Oh, make a motion to reconsider the principal amount in debt service.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We'll make a motion that we change the principal amount in debt service to six hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred sixteen thousand five twenty three.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so now we would do the same thing. We would add that two hundred thousand into the debt service.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry, into C I P allocation.
Which we hadn't done yet.
Right.
I'll move to approve capital improvement at one million, one hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Bye.
All right.
I'm I'm looking at the math.
That's a formula.
So that was an I?
Yes.
All all members were in favor.
And don't we have to go back and re vote on that service now at its new number?
Yes.
Yes.
Make a motion to uh approve that service line at nine hundred twenty eight thousand one hundred thirty three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One more.
Amy, what you looked at, workers' comp.
And health insurance.
And let's start with. Uh, let's start with workers' comp. What can we drop that down to?
Uh, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
You guys want to do that?
Make a motion to. Reconsider?
No, no.
No, no.
Cause we haven't.
Oh, you haven't done it yet.
Make a motion to drop the workman's comp line to one hundred thirty thousand.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, health insurance.
Um, we got renewal for an seventy point four percent, which brings us to one million, six eighty three. Move to make the health insurance line, one million, six hundred and eighty three dollars. About a thousand, sorry, sorry.
The motion was made to set the health insurance line at one million, six hundred and eighty three thousand dollars. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And we need a total.
Yep. Three million, six seventy five, six seventy one.
Love to approve employee benefits at. Three million, six hundred and seventy five, six seventy four.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we kept um contingency open in the hopes of a contract settling. Uh, neither of them have settled yet. Um, so we need to. Keep that status quo for the time being. Did you have anything else there?
I know. I think it's okay to vote on the way it is.
Yeah, I was hoping we could reassign some of the non-negotiated wages, but.
Sorry.
We can't.
I'm also approved contingency at two hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So. That brings us to. How does my revenue number keep coming up? So.
Cause it's not yours to make.
I know.
I'm gonna make it zero instead.
So the my recommendation in the budget proposal, are there any other revenue changes?
No. I think so. I think they've all been made.
Yeah, what just as an update, uh, we had talked about.
What? I still have pilot on mine.
Yeah, so you saw the pilot on your seriously update on that. I submitted testimony um in front of appropriations suggesting that they may have made an error in the governor's pilot allocations. And O P M since affirmed that yes, they did make an error and they corrected it. So um, our we're held harmless there. Our number is uh gonna be the the same five hundred and forty eight thousand number. That it is this year. So that was uh. Crisis averted.
Yeah, I contacted C C M as soon as those numbers came out and said, what happened? And he's like, I don't know. He said, well, I have to look into it. And then he's like, wait a minute, it's supposed to be no less than what fiscal twenty one was. There's some bill out there that says it can't be less than twenty one. I said, well, then our number needs to be five forty eight then. And then Jason testified and it turned out that there was fourteen pounds affected, I think. That got changed.
Less than that, I think it was like seven.
But it was, I mean, ours was a huge number. It was a seventy eight percent reduction. So, wow. We're.
Not happening. That's not happening.
Yeah, it is.
So in in my budget recommendation to you guys, although it's not purview of this board, but it is a conversation point for the Board of Finance, I'm I'm recommending that they use one point two million dollars of the undesigned fund balance. Our fund balance is uh at the high end of our policy. It remains at the high end of our policy. If this is an appropriate time to provide people uh some relief and to also spend that down so that it's a little bit more reasonable of a position. Um, so I am going to encourage the Board of Finance to increase that from seven fifty to to one point two million. Um, what that would do, assuming no changes to our budget or the Port of Ed's budget and that that they the Port of Ed, I'm sorry, the Port of Finance accepts those revenue numbers. Um, the mill rate would go up to thirty four point nine two. Um, if they. Well, that that's the difference of about a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars um, give or take. Between a zero mill increase and um. A half a mill increase, you see one point two, I think it's one twenty two is my my recollection. I can tell you exactly where I would get.
A one point two is what he's putting in the fund balance. We have a philosophical difference on that.
We do.
That's why I'm giving you the stare down. I might have to.
So that's where things did.
What's our percentage now on our back?
Uh, on the spending?
Yeah.
Three points.
I was wondering if we gained or lost. The whole changes we made.
Three point six three.
So we went down a little bit because I think we were three, seven, one.
And and the board of that is three point nine eight. The overall total is three point eight.
What's um? What's our change in all radio? Don't.
What's the one point doing?
It's like point five five to two thousand compared to point one words like that, right?
Uh, point five four miles. Well.
Right, that's yeah, that's what I'm implying. So then it would be like a thirty four.
Wait a minute, I was doing this wrong.
Three.
This is the column doing it. So with the one point two number. Using one point two million dollars, the mill rate change with no other changes to the town or the board of that is a mill rate increase of point one one. Uh, if and and that's where I got the difference of a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. So you want to see it without it, Charlie? It's. Point five four to point one one.
Okay. So we'll change you. Point four three.
I say move, I'm gonna say move it only because if you move it's part of the budget, then we don't have to deal with it down the road. We don't move it and we decide we want to. And then we've got. To come back and find. We have it moved.
I don't so. Um, I I'm. The revenue side is not our purview to make the changes to. I would I recommend it to you guys. That's the premise that we should be working on is that that number is one point two. I think I still think that is what we should be putting in front of the Board of Finance. Um, with, you know, what we can leave it as is with our record, what I present next week. My presentation, I would like to be predicated on. That we're recommending that.
Agreed. Yeah, I'm okay.
Pay no attention to the lady in the corner.
No, I'm not looking at it. Remember when I was on Board of Finance, she'd yell at us all the time when we do that.
I know.
Bet you were there.
So if you're looking for a motion. The motion would be to approve. A a town government total budget. Of seventeen million, seven hundred and fifty six thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars.
You send me a copy of that.
Yeah, I will.
Move to approve the town government budget at seventeen million, seven hundred and fifty six thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars. Do I have to give the rate increase as well or no?
Why not?
Is it three point six three? I can't see it.
That's the uh, yes.
Edit, okay, uh, three point six three percent spending increase.
Second.
Made in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, so what I present? Are are we on the same page? With the one point two?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. I'm gonna email this to.
There's this copy. I screwed up some of the ones.
All right. Um, can we take up just so that Amy can know, um, can we take up agenda item ninety?
I didn't know I had anyone.
Broad retired partners body recognition.
Oh.
Make a motion, we go out of order and take up ninety.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Their budget request was for nine, seven, zero, oh, six, six. Which was a one percent increase, twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
And I think the increase was. Basically due.
They they moved stuff all over the place. Um. You know, it went up in some places. They went down in others, but we're not talking big dollar chips really anywhere. You know, they're up. Eight thousand dollars in part time salaries. They're down ten thousand dollars in fire marshal stipend. They're up five thousand in incentives. They're up three thousand in BICA. Up three thousand in annuities. They're they're up and down.
Down five thousand in vehicle maintenance because of the new truck.
Yep.
Um, up almost four thousand dollars in gas and diesel. I don't know, two thousand in gas and diesel and four thousand in complete fees.
Ellen, remind me what the grand list was up this year?
One.
Two point eight.
Yeah, two point eight.
Thereabouts, it's rounded up, but.
Yeah, we still have to.
So they're they're going up one point three three percent. The town's overall grand list is up two point eight percent. Some of that will be outside of the district, but this is pretty close to a. Flat tax rate for them.
Uh, well, um. I make a motion to accept the Broadbrook Fire Department budget number of nine hundred seventy thousand, sixty six dollars, which is a. About a one percent increase.
Second.
Forward that to, well, I don't have to forward it. It just goes to the. For the financial.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Thank you. Now I think you may go. Oh, I'm wrong, Amy. Your night age two.
That.
That's uh. The highway safety grant application.
Why am I anything to do with the highway safety grant application?
I don't know. You can go. All right, um. So let's go back and call the order uh nine C, discuss the veterans property tax relief ordinance. So this is something that came at the recommendation of the Veterans Commission. There is a new state law that was passed last year, Public Act twenty two S thirty four. That allows, um, actually, we don't need an ordinance for this. The statute allows it to be done by a voter of the elected, but I thought that. Um, affirming the benefit through an ordinance was really a a more proper way to go about doing it. Um, it allows for a ten percent. Um, reduction in assessed value of a veteran of a qualifying veteran's primary residence qualifying is just uh described as uh having. Attained veteran status according to state statute with an adjusted gross income of fifty one thousand, one hundred dollars or less, and it must be owner occupied. So I asked Pullman and Conley to take the uh public acts, draft up an ordinance that uh would allow us to effectuate it, and that's what's in front of you tonight.
Yeah, we saw a draft of this, right?
I think you did.
Yeah.
There's no, I didn't see any significant changes here. Beats better, but. I'm not saying it.
I'll make a motion that we accept the ordinance concerning local property tax relief for veterans as presented.
We have to forward it to a town.
Yeah.
Is that forwarded to Tommy?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Sauerhoffer? Okay, you three are having too much fun back there.
It's actually somebody who keeps texting me. It's actually somebody who keeps texting me.
Good evening, thank you for, uh, putting me on your schedule. So I was so anxious to try out our new, uh, disposal policy, but unfortunately, I'm here to ask you, instead of using the disposal policy of the two thousand nine Crown Vic that was in the police department's hands, I'd like to convey it over to Warehouse Point Fire Department. Um, they could use the car, it's still all, it's all equipped with all the lights and the radio and everything, so it would be a good asset for them. And, you know, I just, I like to try to take care of the fire departments when I can.
Do you know what the vehicle number is of that?
It was the chief's old Crown Vic. So there was no vehicle number on it, it was registered, it had plates on it, but it was his back. He drove it from two thousand nine until two thousand thirteen.
I just wanna make sure it's not one of the three that was at the meeting last night, I just couldn't get turned in because that's all conscripted.
No, this is not what I want.
That's all I wanted to make sure.
I might be hearing him on. So, uh, we did have a, a truck, an old truck that, um, we were gonna get rid of, but I think, um, the police conveyed over their black, uh, truck they used to tow their trailer with. I think I'm gonna use the truck that we had for parts and put a plow and I still assessing, but I think I'm going to, that truck probably will end up just getting scrapped.
Don't be looking over there anymore, this is my little gig.
Here's a suggestion, if it's just gonna get scrapped, donate it to one of the fire departments.
Well, he wasn't at the meeting last night, so I didn't wanna make sure, right?
Yeah, it, it, yeah, we'll see.
And then you can take the scrap metal and bring it to.
Yeah.
I, I think the police department has a plan or a replacement, but I.
Oh, I'm not talking about the trailer, the trailer, the truck that used to tow the trailer.
The question in front of us is whether or not we should convey the chief's old Crown Victoria to the Warehouse Point Fire Department, so let's stay on that.
Yeah, do they want it?
Yes.
It makes sense that.
Right here, signed already, he's waiting to take it and we're gonna leave together.
I don't have no to do. So, I mean, it saves them from buying something and.
It's already outfitted, you know.
You know, it's been, does it have a book value?
No, no.
I'll make a motion that we can pay. What he said.
Two thousand nine.
The two thousand nine.
For Crown Victoria.
Victoria could be East Windsor.
No.
No.
We can change their name too, well.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, what did he say? We convey the vehicle to the Warehouse Point Fire District.
Is it district or department? Cause it is to the district?
District is the governing body that would own the property.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Motion has been made in seconded. The seconded by Sarah, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, three, three in favor, one abstention.
I promise I won't go back next month and I'll give you a break.
Do you have anything else in your disposal, uh, disposal list?
No, I might have a pretty decent list coming up, uh, like I say, we had that, I had two vehicles. Now, right now, just this one's gonna go to them, the other one, I'm still trying to decide what we're doing.
Okay. Um, thank you. Don't go anywhere though, because you might be, we might have questions for you pertaining to the acceptance of Jesse Lane. Okay. Um, so in your packet, there is a memo from the Director of Planning and Community Development suggesting that all of the requirements have been met for the town to accept ownership of Jesse Lane. Um, there is a memo, uh, I believe in here recommending, or with a motion for the Planning and Zoning Commission that the board selecting accepted. So. What we would do now has been, we have had the twenty-four referral happen, it's come to us from Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, we would then have to accept the vote to accept the road and forward that to the town meeting for acceptance.
I gotta say, I like the way, uh, we have all this paperwork and we're sure with all this paperwork that everything is actually done and we're not taking on some, this cost us money in a couple more years, so we think it's, it's ready to do. And I'm glad you guys did this policy and it's being followed.
I'll move to accept Jesse Lane as a town road and forward it to town meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I'm hanging with all my pretty colored folders, I was ready for the veterans, I was ready for the soul up the door, and now I'm ready for our next revaluation. Um, in your packet is, um, an Excel list where I took the three bids that we did receive for the revaluation this year. Um, and compared them, and also a letter of recommendation, um, itemizing the three bidders and my feeling that we, I believe we should choose Vision Government Solutions again for this year's revaluation. Um. They gave me a bid that was in between the other two, but also offered a twenty-one thousand dollar discount if we had them review only sales and permits. Um, considering they reviewed the whole town last year, um. That brings, I, I think that's an awesome way to go. It brings us down to sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars as a bid compared to seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand from the other two companies. Um. I personally feel that Vision did an awesome job last year. Um. What they did in town was almost the equivalent of a full revaluation. Uh, they were out driving town, uh, doing neighborhoods, uh, they really, really did a lot of work. It brought us up to where we should have been, and it's not their fault, the market was sky high. But that's, that's what you had on your packet and that's my recommendation.
Speaking of the market being sky high and, and they're only looking, gonna look at recent, what, this year's sales and permits, they're, they're just gonna go ahead and use those other numbers that we decided not to use, or how's that?
Those other numbers are being put into their database, um, as a reference point. But they are going to analyze sales from October second of twenty twenty-two up through September of twenty-three. And look at the ratios, see what's happening in that small section of the market and come up with new figures.
Yeah, I'm personally concerned going with the same company based on a lot of the negative feedback we received in the process with the phone calls and the appointments and, and also the way that the interaction with this board went, um, so I'm taking that into consideration, so I don't know that that's.
I, I do agree with you, the interaction with the board was not anything what I expected it to be. Um. I think because it was kind of a last minute thing where I asked, uh, two people who are technical people to come in rather than people that are more used to presenting, uh, more. Not detailed, less detailed. Um, more into what the project itself entailed and less of what the details of the statistics were.
Well, just to push back on that though, I mean, the, the interactions with the, uh, project manager from Vision with this board were not good, but they were also the same as my interactions with that private.
I was under the impression that Jim.
Jim was great, I'm talking, I'm talking about Susan.
Susan, uh, is not a frontline person. She, she is the technical person, um, and she was trying to, she was trying to overreach what her comfort level was. Not everybody else is a people person. And unfortunately, that was a mistake to have her come before the board.
Well, that's, I wouldn't take the blame for that, that's the company's center, can't allow her to come.
Well, I, I asked. I asked for, and they were the two people available for the night, yeah, I asked for it, so.
Have you gotten, have you gotten any feedback from those that have sat with them?
I have gotten quite a bit of positive feedback, unfortunately. Not all positive people speak up. And.
So in my.
You people here, the next.
So you, okay, so let me rephrase that, did you get more positive feedback than negative feedback? Or more negative feedback than positive feedback?
I personally, in my office, got more positive feedback.
In.
I've worked with Vision for forty, forty-some odd years and probably eleven towns. Um. And the quality of the work has, has been what we need. Uh, the other two companies are not as technical, not as experienced in the state. Um. There are things that Jay and I have talked about as far as public relations, uh, this time around, we'd have to do better on the public relations. Again, I take responsibility for that, um. We were in a conversion, we were running two systems, we were doing. I, I was maintaining two systems. I have an inexperienced staff, I was trying to check, train, and some things did fall unfortunately through the cracks.
Ellen, I, I commend you for assuming responsibility there, but your, your office was not responsible for the interactions with the, with Vision. That was, that was on that company. Thank you for, for stepping up in that space, but that's not your responsibility to carry it.
Only as good as the staff. And they were on their own.
So we have three bids, um, we have a comparative chart outlining what the pros and cons, or what the, the bid solicitations were new. We have Helen's recommendation, we have our own experiences with the, with at least one of the companies. We do need to get cracking on this sooner than later because there is a time crunch and an availability in terms of getting this project completed for this year.
The municipal valuation service is, is based in Connecticut. Um, I noticed that they don't have a number, that their, their number isn't based on number of parcels, or is that just not filled in? So. So Vision is basing it.
They did not, yeah, they did not include in their bid the number of parcels. Although in the bid, um, with the quest for proposals, I did have a number in there of five thousand, just over five dollars on the side.
You talked about in your, the narrative about, looking for now, about some issues potentially that you saw with the licensing, can you go into that a little bit?
We currently have, we converted to Vision Government Solutions for our gamma assisted mass appraisal software. Um. Part of the request proposals was that whatever company did the reval, they would use the, that software. Um. I am, I spoke to mun- municipal valuation. Um, in their bid, they said they weren't authorized user, but when I spoke to them, they were concerned that they would have to purchase a separate license that the town would have to pay for to use the software. Um. Tyler Technologies in their bid did say that they were going to request unlimited gamma support directly from our server. I'm a little concerned that they can access our service, server and do the work without a separate software license.
Did you talk to Vision, see what they think about it?
I did speak to Vision, um, the person up at Vision said that anytime a revaluation company in the state does a reval with their software, they are mandated, well, requested to purchase a separate license to use the software.
How, how much is that license?
It depends on the size of the town, number of parcels it run, she said an average is about ten thousand pounds.
Okay. So assuming that we would need a license for the other two for Tyler and Minus and all of them, we would add ten brand for there.
Yeah.
We have, in, in all three cases, we have sufficient funding already and see what are to cover.
Yeah, I mean, my initial, but I understand your preference, but, you know, I kinda feel like it would be instructive to find somebody else's opinion, get a second opinion, kinda idea, you know, that's, that was the whole reason why you know, I wanted to, besides the fact that we, the timing of it was horrible, but it felt like getting a second opinion would give everybody, I mean, if, if it's a separate company that comes up and says, well, no, it's, the number's the same, well, that gives you a little bit of confidence that it's based on reality and not purely subjective in some appraiser's head, you know, it's two appraisers basically giving you an appraisal on your house. And I, and I kinda like, I like that idea, I understand that you only want to work with Vision for thirty-five years, but, yeah. Um, but myself, I'm leaning towards a different company because of what we experienced, but more of the reason that I, I just, I, I want a second opinion, I want to see somebody else's work product and be able to compare it to what we had.
So with that in mind, you know, you, you provided your recommendation being Vision, who would your second choice be?
My second choice would be municipal valuation.
That's who I was leaning towards myself.
In my office currently, I have an email chain from the International Association of Assessing Officers, uh, speaking of Tyler and not, not very good reviews.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yes, I, I like the idea of it there in Ohio, so I, the southern company is also a fair, a Connecticut company, so.
Yes.
Um, I think, I know the environment just by living here.
I mean, there's no doubt that I could work with municipal valuation services, um, I know two of their, their officers. Um, one of them is a former assessor and teacher like myself, I mean, it's, it's not a matter that I can't work with someone else, but.
What do you guys think?
I agree with Alan, I, I think to use the same company again is not a wise idea. Um, we did hear a lot of negative feedback on that company. Um, and I, I understand you often hear twice as much negative feedback as you do positive feedback, however, there was a lot of negative feedback and it wasn't good. And I really believe, yeah, we, we set this aside because we didn't like what we heard the first time, so it's kinda like going to the same doctor for a second. It's kind of like going to the same doctor for a second opinion. I just can't see the practicality of it.
I'm on the same page. I agree with everything that's been said.
Great.
I've had this discussion with others before. I would prefer to go with somebody different.
So with that in mind, and considering Helen's feedback, you know, through her, her peer group. Is there a motion to go with municipal valuation services?
I'll move to accept the bid and go with municipal valuation services LLC. Do I need to, do I raise your signature?
Yes, please.
And authorize the signature for first selection.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is a, a great opportunity. Deputy Chief Hart, floor is your, I'm sorry, Carl.
Oh, they call it worse. Getting a ticket on my way home.
Well, we're gonna make it easier for that.
It's gonna be an easy ticket.
Yeah, this is, this is a grant we applied for. It's a, it's a highway safety project grant application, and it's for the purchase of E. Printers for our cruisers. So E printers are printers that will interface with their CAD and our RMS system. And also the Central Fracture Bureau. So right now, what ends up happening is if you find yourself unfortunately stopped by one of our officers or involved in a traffic collision. And they want to give you a citation, they handwrite it out. But it's also has to be put into our records management system the next gen that we purchased quite a while ago. So there's a, there's, there's redundancy there. And then the records clerk fills out a transaction elements and sends it to the Central Fracture Bureau. There's time, there's a time consumption. Process in that, and we saw that there was an increase of about a minute and twenty seconds between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two on the issue of tickets. It's also an officer safety issue because you're down looking at your ticket book and, and looking things for, for a longer, greater period of time. So. What this program is, and the state is pushing it on police departments, and we're ahead of the curve, fortunately. This program will allow the purchase of eleven E tickets in the support, the installation. And licensing for the tickets and eleven of our line cars. There is a little bit of an, of an error on what went out on the agenda. So on the front page, you have one that has seventeen thousand and change. That has been increased to twenty thousand eight hundred forty-six thousand thirty-four cents. That is, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, twenty thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars thirty-four cents. That reflects the same number that's in the back on the equipment side. It increased, there was an error that we caught, I caught just before we got up here. The increase is that the grant will also cover the installation of our vendor to put, put the E tickets in there. So. If we go forward with that, we'll purchase those, we'll apply for the grant, we'll purchase those, put them in the thing, and our officers will be able to. Issue tickets with greater effectiveness and efficiency. Which I don't know if that's a good thing or bad thing, but. Depends on where you are.
So like after you get the system in, we, you know, we, is there a monthly fee for this?
So the only, no, so the, the only. Town expense, I'm glad you brought that up. The only town expense will be in the year, budget year twenty-four, twenty-five. There's a two thousand five hundred dollar next gen maintenance fee for the, for the interface between the two, but that, that is not incurred. Until twenty-four, twenty-five budget, and it'll be an IT expense, and Joey has agreed to.
Just shoulder the burden?
No, who knows nothing about it, but if you went to another car, and we're not far out of that.
Don't have to give it away. I think I recall seeing in the documentation that there is also an obligation on the department to, to pay for the supplies. They got so much supplies once they're installed.
Yes, yeah, there is.
And for how long is that?
So it depends, there, there's supplies on the ribbons and, and things like that. So last year, we. I was on our fifty tickets. I don't know how long the supplies would last. The only, the only pilot part of this, we had, we had E printers in, in the past. It was, well, quite a few years ago, we had two, they were installed. But we never were able to finish the process of making them interface with the Central Fracture Bureau, so we never used them. This program here is from the highway safety. It's encouraging police departments to install all these in their car and in their vehicles. For one, safety, two, efficiency and effectiveness, and the connection with the Central Fracture Bureau. To answer how much of the supplies would be, I don't have, I don't have anything to put that on. We, but that's also, we would, we would certainly absorb that in our operation budget.
Probably largely offset by your ticket books now.
Correct. Correct. So we can't get rid of our ticket books entirely because sometimes you get an infraction for a non, a non-ordered vehicle, so it depends on how that works. So yeah, jaywalking or simple trespassing like that, whatever, well, they might be able to, I'm not sure if the, you could use E ticket for that, but.
Sort of. Wait here, I gotta go get my card.
Right, right, certainly, certainly in a moderate. So it's a tall ask, like I said, for this, this year in the. In the equipment page, sort of spelled it out. And you can see on one of the pages that the, we determined that. Twenty twenty-one, the average infraction was ten minutes and thirty-one, ten, ten minutes, thirty-one seconds, and twenty twenty-two would increase to eleven minutes and fifty-one. Seconds, so we're trying to reduce that. Amount of time.
So we just need to approve the signature of first selected here, right?
Right. And, and, to be clear, this is a, a no expense incurred by the town grant application. Yes, it is. Excellent. No expense, it's a way for us to get the order. I believe eventually, we're going to, all the police departments are going to have to have this, so we're ahead of the curve in that state. Fortunately, this grant.
Two minor things on the, on. Application, this one here. The date. Interest rate, project start of date, April seventeenth to something.
Right.
Is that going to be twenty-three?
That'll be twenty-three, yes.
And then if you cross-reference to the quote from the next gen, where the twenty-five hundred dollars comes in play. It says July first, twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Right.
I thought you just said it was twenty twenty-five.
So it'll be, we would have to, we would have to put it in the budget for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
So this covers the next gen hookup for the first year of the grant.
So this is the first year of the grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Right, and so I have, I don't have Bill Freeman's signature, the one that we turned into, first of all, we had Bill Freeman's signature, but it also had that error. So I want to fix that and submit it back, take it back, submit it back for the first one. So if you guys voted on allowing him to sign it. There's a few things that I, that I want to change in this process.
So then you would remove the wrong tape that's shattering here?
Yeah, he's gonna give me the correct. In full disclosure, when I was back there enjoying all of this, I was reading through it, I found two spelling errors, so I got upset though.
I caught a couple as well.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So.
At least use your time.
Try to be thorough.
Thank you, Deputy.
Thank you.
For the record, I want to take you out of order. Are you saying you go home, you got the first.
Hey, listen, that's okay. Amy got the goal, so.
She'll have the light.
Here, so. Julie's been entertaining us, and so we're having a good time. Always enjoyable to democratic process.
By the way, I'll keep him around in case he muscle.
I'll move to accept the FY twenty twenty-three Highway Safety Project Grant Application with the Connecticut Department of Transportation. And authorize the signature of the first selection.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, I, I think it's great that we're, you know, being proactive again, and it's, this is going to be like something that every police department needs to have. I think it's great that we've. Taken the initiative to move forward now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tax returns?
I'll move to approve the tax refunds totaling five thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars and two cents.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? On February twenty-first, I met with residents of Park Hill for a standing conversation with them on any topic they'd like to discuss. I did the same as I do every month at the East Windsor Senior Center on March first, and in both cases. Topics came up on a whole wide range of questions, which is really my favorite part about those conversations. Questions and topics ranged from support for the proposed community center project to road improvement concerns inside of. Access rent concerns to questions about the budget and more. I really love these visits because the format is, is so completely open-ended and people will just. Ask me any, and it's an opportunity for me to either interact with them and, and share some knowledge that I have, or. Take something back and realize what we need to be following up on. So those are always fun opportunities. On March second, I was joined by Lieutenant Governor Susan Bysowitz, Senator Sowad Anwar. And Representative Carol Hall, as we visited a pair of very successful, multi-generational, family-owned businesses in East Windsor. The four of us toured Collins Pipe Company and Coma Precision. We talked about the history of their businesses. Their marketplaces and what attracted them to the town of East Windsor. Both companies have expanded their operations here in East Windsor in the last few years, which was great to hear, and they have plans to do more. Later that day, I testified before the Energy and Technology Committee on a number of bills pertaining to the siting of solar facilities that affect municipalities. Those projects are cited by the Siting Council, who enjoys sovereignty over municipal zoning regulations. And a number of those bills sought to right-size that to give municipalities more control. On Saturday, March fourth, I stopped down at Scott Hall to check in on Tim Mislik and his Eagle Scout project. Tim has been working to build covered benches for the soccer field at Abbey Road, which would be a nice added feature. To the facility once the lights are installed later this spring. Thanks to Tim for his hard work, and congratulations to him on nearly attaining the rank of Eagle. Coming up, there are some important dates to remember in the next few weeks. First, on March fifteenth. Next Wednesday. The Diversity Council will be holding their DEI workshop. It's the first of three in a series. It's co-sponsored by our board, the superintendent, and the acting chief of police. That'll be at five thirty PM at the Robert Elementary School's cafeteria. All are welcomed and encouraged to attend. Also on the fifteenth is the deadline to schedule deliverable fuels for the Connecticut Energy Assistance Program for residents that have been approved. To determine if you still have benefit funds available or have any questions, you can call Social Services. East Windsor Social Services will begin making renters rebate appointments after March twentieth for qualified East Windsor residents. There are certain income guidelines. You need to be sixty-five years or older or permanently disabled. And over eighteen years old. The renters rebate provides a one-time payment to qualified Connecticut renters based on income expenses in twenty twenty-two. Coming up on March twenty-ninth, I'm very excited about this, and I know it's during the day, during the week, but if you guys can come, you're gonna love it. The first election of summers, Tim Keen is a retired naval captain and Navy SEAL. And he put on this presentation as part of their Veterans Coffee Hour series back in January, talking about his experience as a Navy SEAL. But also as a member of the dive team that recovered the Apollo seventeen astronauts after they splashed down. And as the leader of the dive team, dive team for Skylab two. It, it's about probably a forty-five minute presentation. It is awesome. It is awesome. Anybody who has any interest in the Vietnam era or the military or the, the space race. Issues will thoroughly enjoy Captain Keen's presentation, and I'm really excited to host him. Breakfast with Easter Bunny will be held at the East Windsor Senior Center on Saturday, April first. That'll be from eight thirty to eleven thirty. Breakfast will consist of usual breakfast spares, pancakes, sausage, juice, fruit, that kind of thing. No, no tickets are required, and you can pay at the door. Great opportunity for little kids. Fees are six dollars per adult, three dollars per child, but it is cash only. And lastly, I want to extend my condolences to the Bravakis family and the passing of longtime East Windsor teacher, coach, and athletic director Leo Bravakis. Mr. Bravakis was one of the greats, having impacted thousands of students over his many years working in our school system. Certainly, our thoughts are with his family. That's all I have. Great.
Jason, yeah. Go back to DEI thing and tell us what DEI.
Oh, I'm sorry, DEI is diversity, equity, inclusion.
Okay.
They did an initial talk. Last May, maybe, and they're doing all three parts in the series, and actually have invited diversity councils from other communities, like I know Ellington is going to be attending as well. It's a really great program. If you didn't have the opportunity to go last time, you should check it out. It, it is really. A, a well-done thing. And it actually is fun. They, they do a nice job of turning it into an interactive, actually fun experience. No, so that's highly recommended too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a meeting last night at the East Windsor Police Commission and Police Department. Was a short meeting, they said most of their stuff is handled in executive session. But they didn't men- mention that they had three vehicles ready to be turned over to the first election's office. To provide to the public works and whatever. Protocol is required to do that. They removed all of the lights and whistles and bells and stuff, so those are three vehicles are set to go. Red red fire department requested a sign somewheres around Highland Avenue, Main Street, coming up this way. Indicating that there's a fire station ahead. There. Is one that comes from the opposite side down. I just have never seen it. So they're asking, they have one, but so they're going to take care of that. We trust in them, but it's probably going to be somewheres around Elaine, the old Elaine Pizza area. But that's to be determined, so that sign will go up. They currently are loading and detective. Going, active date is March nineteenth. And. Officer Gonzalez has been put on a leave of absence for five months, and she's attending the academy for DEA. Which started on the thirteenth. They granted her the leave of absence, so in case. The DEA is not what she wants, be able to come back and take over her current position. So there's going to be a supervisor vacancy that they're temporarily going to appoint a senior officer to fill that position pending. What her decision is going to be after the. Training class that, well, training that she's doing for this new job that she. Applied for, so that looks like it's going to fall. J Jones. So. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Charlie?
Well, the only thing I had was SquarHalls Point Fire District Meeting. Not a lot was talked about on that. They had responded to fifty-five calls last month. Our marshal reported having done twenty-seven inspections. For the month. Finalizing on budget and. And that's about it. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Well. Okay, so Miss Conservation and Agriculture, because we were here. Diversity by Miss with that to work, but I did want to reiterate this, the DEI series that they're having. Put a lot of work into that, and they're really excited to. Put that on, so you might want to check that out if you can. Wetlands. Approved an extension on, in the industrial part for one of the businesses there to do a little bit more work, but then they had an interesting. Added as a bright determination that was postponed. Till next month before a decision would be made. But basically, it's the same company that's at. Planning and zoning right now, looking to get a text amendment change to basically have kind of a. An exception for farms to not have to follow, people that want to do. Alterations to farmland, then not have to follow the. Basically gravel pit or gravel, you know, mining. Rules, basically getting a special use permit and everything. It's a pretty sticky. Topic and what they're asking, they're asking a lot, really, to be honest, and. There was a lot of questions both at planning and zoning and at wetlands, and a lot of concerns about if you open this hole, how could it be? Used in the future. Of course, you, you know, you don't do a text amendment for one. Probably do it for a whole. Probably do it for a whole. For anybody that wants it, so um that's gonna work its way through, but I think it's. Something that we really, really kind of make sure we get right, or it could cause us a lot of trouble. Right, so basically, um, you might want to keep an eye on it, planning and zoning, wet, wetlands for the next month or so.
Okay, on February twenty-second, after we finished our budget workshop, I was able to attend the Board of Education meeting, which was already in progress. Ryan Galloway reported that the budget is in good standing, and the Food Service and Family Resource Center line cleanups and reconciliations are projected to be. Complete by the March fifteenth deadline. The OPM corrective action plan was completed and sent into the state on February seventh. This was due to not having timely bank reconciliations, and an action plan had to be put in place. The board received a communications update from Justin Martin. And reviewed a promotional video that was put together to increase enrollment in pre-K through second grade. And encourage kindergarten registration for the fall of twenty twenty-three. The ad will run in three Hartford zip codes and at crack. Um, we will also be participating at a fair at the Yard Codes Community Center. On February twenty-seventh, the building commission met, this was their first meeting since March twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. The members thanked Al Rodriguez for his many years of service to the commission as a member and as chairman. New officers were elected, Jim Thurst Chairman, Heather Spencer Vice Chairman, and Stanley Kemet Junior Secretary. Joe Sauerhopper updated the board um with an overview on projects on both the school and town side. And the twenty twenty-three meeting schedule has been set, and the group will meet on the last Monday of every month at six thirty PM here at Town Hall. The Economic Development Commission meeting on Monday night was canceled. Last night, I attended the Board of Education meeting, the Broadbrook Elementary School has chosen Ranger and Time for the One School, One Book. Event, which was announced last week with the help of Officer Mitchell and K nine Milo. The science fair was last week at the middle school, and students participated in Read Across America. Students at the high school will be taking SATs on March twenty-second. And the board voted last night to give early release to high school students on that day. The board voted to approve their FY twenty-four budget at twenty-six million seven four eight three six six and sixty-nine cents. At a three point nine eight percent increase and send it to the Board of Finance. There will be a Board of Finance public hearing next Wednesday, March fifteenth. The board approved a model Congress field trip to AIC in Springfield, Massachusetts for thirteen students in grades nine through twelve. Our students are presenting three bills, capping insulin at thirty-five dollars a month. The pink bill, which is reducing costs for feminine products and making hospital costs more clarified. There are opportunities for two scholarships to AIC at this workshop. An update was given on the open choice pre-K enrollment, which I talked about earlier in my report. There are sixteen student kids interested in enrolling in pre-K with eight of those listing East Windsor as their first choice. This would give the school district the opportunity to expand the pre-K program. Um, there are financial incentives that would allow us to offer full day pre-K. And the ability to hire hire another teacher with those financial incentives, um, and more discussion is to follow. Um, and I'd just like to echo Jason's comments on Mr. Bravakis, I had the privilege of having him as a teacher as well. And he was very influential, I played girls' basketball, and him being the athletic director. Um, we weren't always respected in the N triple C, and he really did a lot for us, so my thoughts and prayers are with his family.
Thank you. Public participation, um, again, this is one of two opportunities for the public to address the board, I'll first turn anybody who's here in the room. Then turn anybody who's with us uh virtually, is there anyone here who would like to address the members of the board, please identify yourself by name and address. Okay, is there anybody online who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen? Seeing none, uh, we will have an executive session, it'll be just the five of us. No action will follow, um, so could I have a vote to go into executive session next?
No, we go into executive session.
Second, made in second, and all in favor? Opposed for the executive session at nine sixteen? Um, uh, it's ten oh five, we're out of executive session, with no further business to come before the board, um, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Muska, seconded by Selectman Norrell, it's non-debatable, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, we are adjourned to ten oh six.